Meeting, work session of the Board of Commissioners. And like last time, I think we still need those who will and able, please stand for a moment of prayer, not only just in the place of allegiance. My pleasure. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. We're pleased once again to have Dr. Janet Memark, the Director for the Cobb and Douglas Public Health Agency, to give us an update on where we are on COVID-19 and her thoughts. It's where we should go.
Do I turn? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here today and Chairman, to give you updates on our status in COVID-19. Right now, I had to update these numbers very quickly, but we have over 200,000 cases in the United States for COVID-19. Georgia has over 4,600 cases at this time, and there are 293 cases in Cobb County. Currently, we stand at 15 deaths, and one of those at least has been made posthumously. The Georgia hospitalization rate is about 20%, and for Cobb County, we are at 40% at this time. Some of you may be asking why that's so high, and we think it has to do with our testing capabilities and that it's not quite as where we need it to be. So if we have a higher denominator, then we can have a lower hospitalization rate. But we're testing really the highest risk of people, and most of those are in the hospitals at this time. So we talked a little bit about testing. We talked previously. We still have these three abilities to test, and we have the drive-through for Cobb Douglas Public Health that still, you know, remains under 50 people a day that we can do. There is two federal sites that are currently in the state. One is in Albany and one is in Woodstock that have a little bit more ability. But we also know that the state is working with universities at this time to try to come up with an innovative way that we can have more testing throughout the state. So we're waiting to hear more about that. We continue to have some limited supplies, though. Even with the ability to test, at times swabs are a problem and limited throughout the nation, and that causes problems. The results are still a bit delayed, so we're getting them anywhere from four days to, you know, 10 days or more. So testing, we talked about, we're still hoping that that comes online. I'll tell you a little bit later why that's so important for us. Remember the flattening of the curve? And so everybody knows about that. Our little star there remains under the hospital maximum capacity, and that's one of the things that we look at in our county. So back to why does it matter? Once again, so we continue, we still have ventilators available at this time, but we'll see that there are some issues that are kind of cropping up a little bit in our nursing homes. We are having some challenges with morgue capability as well that GMA is helping us with in the state. So this is a tough graph to look at. When you take a look at this, you see the numbers for our cases, and it's a little bit difficult to see exactly what's going on here. They fluctuate, and there's a lot of variation based on how these numbers are being put into the system. This graph is a little bit easier, but there's a lot of fluctuation because a lot of this was, is based on kind of manual entering into the system. And so there are some other graphs that show a little steadier increase, and so we're hoping that we'll reach the peak soon, is our hopes. I wanted to show everybody a geo-heat map of our county. We were able to put together some of the data that we had to show, to really get across why social distancing was so important in Cobb County. On March 6, we started off with just a few cases, and you can see how they are located around the county. When we go to March 13, you see a little bit more widespread. Just one week later, you see that it is already kind of widespread around the county. The cases are not extremely high at this time, but you can see that it's not a small cluster around one area. It is more diffuse. The 20th, and I'm sorry, we have Douglas County, this is our district, so we have Douglas with it. But if you can pick out Cobb County there, it's just an increased concentration, and even more so when you look at March 30. So this is what I've been using to explain to people that even though we don't have testing numbers, we have evidence. So when I show you this data, it shows that it is widespread around the county, and there's no linkages between each of these cases. So we didn't have testing, but I can show you that we have community transmission. So we talk more about evidence. Once again, we talk about we had some daycares that are positive, and at this time, we have six nursing homes that hold cases, as well as two pending cases in nursing homes. The schools, we had multiple exposures, and I really have to give a shout-out about the school closures that happened. That was a really good move because we were seeing in the end of that week after the school closures that more cases were popping up that were school-related. So closing those schools was one of the best things that we can do to try to mitigate the spread, and I think that having those people at home made a huge difference. The hospitals currently, as district-wide, we have about, and this is a day old already, but 206 people that are in hospitals that are thought to have COVID-19 or are positive. So we continue to have community spread. So where we are now, did you want to come? I'm going to have my deputy come and go through some of these, and she's been working a lot on the different executive orders. So my deputy, Lisa Crossman, will come and explain some of this stuff, where we are.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So one of the reasons why we wanted to come and talk with you is because as we've evaluated the executive orders across the county that include all the cities, what we're seeing is that some of these executive orders are ending between the 3rd and the 15th of this month. And so we feel like this is a good time for everybody to get together and try to get consistent. Everybody was working really hard to get these executive orders in place over the last few weeks. And so there are some, a lot of commonalities, but there are some things that we differ on. So at this point, what we'd like to ask you to do is that the mayors and the Commissioners all kind of look and see if there's some commonalities where we can get together. One, because that'll have a bigger impact in the outcomes. And secondly, it'll be more consistent for all the residents who may have a business in a city but live in the county. And so that's why we looked at this. All right. So one of the recommendations is to really push the social distancing. We understand that that is the only tool that we have right now to be able to combat this. And so in some of the cases, we have some social distancing recommended, but we'd like to push that harder. So for example, we commend all of the cities and the county for being able to close the restaurants and the bars to just allow takeout or delivery only. We recommend that you continue that and that we hold on to that. We also are looking at the social distancing for both the essential and the nonessential businesses. So for essential businesses like healthcare and first responders, you know, we are recommending that you provide social distancing as much as possible, although it's, you know, it's not going to be possible to have an ER physician keep six feet away from you in order to treat you. But it is possible for some of our businesses who are essential to be able to do that. For example, in public health, we have some of our essential services that we've transitioned to Zoom meetings or doing over the phone or being able to do mail information to them. We also are recommending that we don't look at a time limit for nonessential businesses. So there's a number of nonessential businesses where we would say, first of all, at all times that you provide your service, you've got to be able, you must provide social distancing opportunity. More than six feet apart, less than 10 people gathered at a time, period, regardless of the time that that's offered. We also are saying, are suggesting that you all consider that personal touch businesses, who are considered nonessential, close for this time being because there is not a way to safely provide haircuts and manicures and that massages by six feet away. So we recommend that those businesses that are classified as nonessential, if they are personal touch, that we don't have those open. The last group is our grocery stores and our large-box stores. We have noticed, as we've all been going around the community, that we do seem to still have a large concentration of people at the same time at the grocery stores and some of the large-box stores. Some of those businesses are doing a great job at maintaining social distances. For example, they're making sure that they only let a certain number of people into their store at the same time so that they can maintain that distance around each person. Some of them are making sure that they have people wait outside. And so there are some that are doing a really good job. We've done a shout-out to Home Depot because they seem to have gotten on this pretty early. But we noticed that there's some other big businesses in our community that are essential, and we certainly don't want them to close, but they're not maintaining that social distance We recommend that you retain the shelter-in-place guidance for folks, that they maintain a shelter in place except for when they seek or provide essential services. And then the last is that we recommend that you all would close all the parks and the pools that may be opening soon until we get through this a bit more. The last piece is that many of the orders, because they did have a sunset date established with them, that you all consider extending that to April 24 to be consistent with the Governor's order, or at some point that you all agree that that's the same sunset date. I'll stop there.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody, and it doesn't feel that way, but there is some glimmers of hope right now, and we are seeing that, you know, there is definitely a decrease in the amount of people that are out. And the data right now, it looks like we may be hitting towards the most rapid pace, and I pray that it continues that way. But as the data keeps getting put in, they keep changing kind of the methodology of how it gets put in, we hope that we're really kind of getting there soon, is our hope. So it's working, so I just, we want to keep going. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Memark. So I'll just, I'll start with, you can stay up there, Dr. Memark. I think Commissioner Burl might have a question. I'm going to start with her, if she has any questions of you or anything else, any other member out here. Commissioner Burl.
Yes, sir. Yes, I do have some questions. Thank you, first of all, Dr. Memark and Lisa Crossman for all you're doing. These are some really good statistics here that you shared. Of the 293, are those confirmed cases in Cobb?
I didn't hear her well.
Is it 200, the cases that you had on your chart, is that a confirmed number?
Yes, those are confirmed numbers, yes.
Do we know how many have been tested?
You know, we don't have the exact numbers of how many have been tested. I have the numbers statewide, but I don't have them down to county level, though.
Okay. But are all the confirmed cases, have they been tested, or we just know that they have it based on the symptoms, or how does that work?
Those are confirmed by testing. When I talked about the nursing homes, we have two that are pending that are showing symptoms, but they're not confirmed by testing.
Right, okay. And then, but with confirmed cases, how, what is the protocol for disclosing that or reporting that to public health or like from the hospitals or from the businesses that have an employee that is confirmed?
So the nurse, so-
How do we know?
Okay, so that's a great-
Where they are.
That's a great question. So this is a reportable disease now within 24 hours, so any hospital provider that runs a test and is positive has to report to public health. There are some electronic methods that that's happening, so that is something that is happening. Now, we are working with, the hospitals are really good about this because they already have protocols in place for people that are pending a test and their symptoms are very consistent with COVID-19. Nursing homes, though, are not as used to this process, and so because we have so many patients that are potentially in nursing homes here, we have been very proactive with trying to meet with them weekly on Zoom calls and asking them if they have any suspected cases, because a test can take so long. So we are trying to help guide them through that to make sure that they know what they should do if they suspect a case so it doesn't spread by the time we get the test back. So we're trying to work with them very closely.
Okay. Um, there, social media, as prominent as it is today, we get a lot of questions from citizens or emails from citizens that they've heard that there was a case at a grocery store or business. And of course, that scares people a little bit or panic, but how do we get, how do they get the faith to reassure them that if it is a confirmed case that, you know, that the employee did not come in contact or did come in contact with customers and, you know, just follow the symptoms, the rules, and if they come down with something, how do we set their hands at ease, in other words?
So that's a really good question. Yeah, those are very good questions, so that's a difficult one. When we first started off in this pandemic, we had the ability to do contact tracing and to identify each case, talk to each, and talk to each contact of each case. But as the pandemic, as it, you know, goes further, we don't have the ability to do that. So we can't call every single person that is a case, I mean, is a contact of a case. And so we are focusing right now on some of the highest-risk situations, so it has moved to just mitigation of this now. So we contact, if you are working in a nursing home or a hospital or somewhere where you would have a lot of exposure, we would get to those as soon as possible. So that leaves you with, how do you, how do you know? So you really don't know at this point, right? So everybody has to do some preventive things. So making sure that your employees do not have any sort of fever, that this has to be in every workplace that can do it, check for fevers and check for symptoms, and make it so that it is okay for people to stay home. There, I know we're a very hard-working society, and people will come to work sick. This is not the time to do that. And so we almost have to, we have, this is why we're social distancing. There is no way for us to know exactly every single contact that we have. There was one district that this, somebody had 150 close contacts, and there's just no way that one team can do that. And so to be able to contact all those people, so you really have to take what's called universal precautions or even more than that, and making sure that you stay away from people best you can during this time so that we can allow this curve to flatten out. And then another thing that's important is the testing aspect. So I know people are wondering, they're at home and wondering, when is this going to stop, right? And I wonder that, too. When are we going to see the end of this? When we see the flattening of the curve and know that we are doing a better job and then have it start coming down, we have to have the testing capability to be able to, at that point, if we have any sort of case, cluster, or outbreak, we can act upon that. Right now, there's not enough testing that I can do that immediately, so we have to have more testing. And so I know the state understands how important this is, and they're working really hard to get us that. And there's more tests that are coming out by different commercial venues. So we're all looking at those things to increase our testing because that's an important factor because if we don't know what's going on, you're going to have a second and third wave of this and just prolong the pain for everybody during this period.
Yeah, I know, it's difficult, but, okay, so will the, we never hear about the recovery case. So do we assume that of the 293 that were affected, subtract 15 deaths, and over a two-week period, those have recovered?
I didn't get it.
I wish it was that simple, right?
No, it was hard to hear, I apologize. You know, I think that it's, this is, it's very difficult to know. The recovery rates right now, they are not reported in a, you know, in one way. And so you have people that are undiagnosed that could have it, you have people that were sheltering at home, diagnosed and sheltering at home, you have people that were in the hospital, that were released from the hospital. So they, I checked with the state, and they did not have that data available to us. I tried to get it, but they did not have that at the time, so I apologize.
Okay. And then, but all the cruise ship passengers that were housed at Dobbins, have been released, correct?
Yeah, as far as we know. We have limited contact with that, that's a federal installation, so we were able, we have some, you know, glimpses of that, that our Cobb County residents were released back to their homes, and we were actually monitoring those people.
Okay. Were any of those in our report, accounted in our case report, or only if they lived in Cobb?
Only if they live in Cobb.
Okay. And then, I have other things to report, Mr. Chad, but I'm going to leave the other Commissioners after questions about the Memark. Can you come back to me at the end?
I'll catch you at the end, Commissioner. Thanks. All right, Commissioner Cupid.
Pardon?
Commissioner Cupid is next. I'll come back to you after we're all done here for your report from your network.
I don't know if she's-
Commissioner Cupid, can you hear me?
Pardon, I have a bit of a lag.
Okay. All right, we can hear you now, though.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have a bit of a lag because my phone and my video are not at sync. I can hear you.
All right, so we're ready for your questions for Dr. Memark.
Yes. I would like to see the slide that had the recommendations.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going to give people seizures, sorry. There you go. Can you see them?
Do you have that slide on your screen, Commissioner Cupid?
Okay, Chairman.
Yeah, we can, we can hear you.
These questions are directed toward Dr. Memark. I would like to see the recommendations on the slide. Okay, I see it's up on the screen. There was a statement that you made about big-box retailers, we've had a lot of correspondence with citizens who are concerned about persons who are not socially distancing themselves within those stores. Are you sure that Home Depot has some good practices in place?
Mm-hmm.
Can you speak to those, please?
Yeah, my understanding is Home Depot has, I've heard from several witnesses, that they have their lines outside, and they only allow a certain number of people inside, and based on square footage and the six-foot rule. And then they keep people outside that are six feet apart, and so they only allow a certain number in. So they did that right away after the executive order came out. Let's see if Lisa adds.
So Commissioner, I sent earlier today, it's not been that long ago, so you might not have received it to, I think to Jackie and to the Chairman, the guidance that we had put together for grocery stores and large grocery stores, but that is the same guidance you would use at some of the other big-box stores. The reason that, you know, hardware stores and some of the others like Walmart and Target are, is considered essential is because they sell food or because of the hardware, the support for housing. But I can forward that to you after this meeting as well, if you've got, see if you have additional questions.
Commissioner Gabriel, yes.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question. So how are we getting this information to our big-box retailers?
Well, and so some ways, it's through just our list, like through chambers and through our list that we have with the grocery stores through the Department of Agriculture. In some cases, we also have corporate headquarters here, like Home Depot and our Publix Regional Office.
Thank you, I have a question. So how are we getting this information to our big-box retailers?
Sorry, I think that was you repeated. Okay, I'm sorry, I got distracted. So I think that the difficulty is not to get the word out to all of them. We can do that through media and also through direct mails to their corporate offices, but the other is coming out with published guidelines, like what I sent you all today. We did some best practices across the country about what are some things that different large stores can do to maintain that social distancing, and so we would just ask them to follow those guidelines.
And just, Chairman and I talked about this a little while ago. I know he reached out to Publix, and I went to Publix this morning, and they had all these things in place, which I was going to talk about when I got to my questions. And also, Home Depot announced a little before we came to this meeting, new things that they were putting in place that were more in line with the social distancing that we're asking for. So I think, I think the word is getting out there. It's just, it's taking a little bit of time to do it, but I mean, I can tell you that, you know, the Chairman, he can tell you when he talked to Publix, but it was probably, what, about a day, day and a half before they had it all in place?
I mean, I do think we have to recognize that this whole thing has moved in a period of about less than four weeks, and so I really do commend a lot of our large corporations who have stepped up and in a very short period of time, put a lot of new policies and protocols in place. We just need to keep going and to have it be consistent across the district.
Okay. Commissioner Cupid, you still have more questions, I believe.
I can't, forgive me, there's a lag between the video I'm observing and my communication on my phone. There was a recommendation on the slide that recommended closing parks and pools. We've been receiving a lot of correspondence from citizens, both in favor of closing parks and persons who are in favor of, not necessarily opening parks, but opening up trails. And there have been communications by the Atlanta- And there has been communications by the Atlanta that still is keeping its Beltline open and also feeding on parks. Can you help provide us some guidance with that? I can understand arguments on both sides.
Commissioner, I can as well. You know, my whole background has been trying to promote good policy and good activity or related to physical activity and nutrition. So, it really breaks my heart to see things that would reduce the, our residents' opportunity for physical activity. However, in this situation, what we're finding is that a lot of folks are out at the parks and on playground equipment or on the trails and it is either impossible because of the volume of people or they kind of lose track of the goal of keeping that social distance. And so, because of that, and there, it isn't a good way to enforce that while everybody is on these trails, we're saying that for the time being, and I'm hoping that it's really a short period of time, but for the time being, that we need to close those for The other, the thing that we're dealing with is that Chris Hutchinson, our Director of Environmental Health, reminded me this morning that we are coming up on the time when pool inspections would start at all the HOAs and all the different apartment complexes. And so, our concern expands to those as well because it's pretty hard to socially distance yourself when you're in a pool or around some of these small pools. And so, we think that that ought to be included in that parks and recreation policy, unfortunately. Did I answer your question? Commissioner, I just wanted to make sure I answered your question.
Chairman, if you can hear me, I have another question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Commissioner Cupid, we still hear you.
Yes, thank you. I'm seeking some guidance with respect to the shelter in place policy and then provision within our declaration.
I answered your question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, lines of service.
And again, forgive me, there's lag. I'm seeking guidance on the shelter in place policy and there seems to be some confusion about how you shelter in place, they get our providing, or we're providing guidance with respect to non-essential businesses and it's sending somewhat of a mixed message about whether or not people should shelter in place and early for essential businesses or if we are encouraging them to shelter in place and then when they go out, just to socially distance themselves. I don't know how, what you're sharing says is consistent with a policy because I thought I heard you say our shelter in place policy should only protect people going out for essential purposes or for essential businesses.
So, Commissioner, you're correct, that it does send a bit of a mixed message. The concept of shelter in place is, the kind of statement is that we are asking residents to shelter in place unless they are seeking or providing essential services. So, that's our focus with the shelter in place regardless of the time of day. However, in order to be able to still do some business, we don't want to completely shut down those businesses who could provide services with the social distancing guidance in place. So, if there is a non-essential business that can provide their services to less than 10 people and assure the social distancing of more than six feet, then we're making a concession to say, okay, let's go ahead and allow that. But it is a, a bit of a movement on that continuum of sheltering in place.
Yes, and I think where there's probably the greatest frustrationism amongst employees who are working at non-essential businesses, that our policy says to only leave when providing essential services or receiving essential services.
I think also, some of that is to allow businesses to try to continue to operate if, with a, with a remote capabilities and things like that. So, you do have some businesses that are able to continue, they can, you know, stock and send things out, ship things out. So, we don't want to shut everything down when they could actually operate but don't have to have a lot of foot traffic. So, it kind of leaves that window for them to, to be able to do those things. But then, you know, you can, you walk that fine balance where, you know, then people are getting massages and stuff. And so, that's why we're trying to tighten it up and, a little bit so that it's not as much of a risk.
If, if I may interject, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. It's my understa, well, first of all, we have allowed the non-essential businesses under the current declaration of emergency to operate between certain hours with the 10, no more than 10 people and the six-foot rule in place. So, it's also my understanding that the essential businesses are supposed to be practicing the same social distancing and, and I know they're not, but the 10 people rule as well. So, if they're doing, if they're supposed to be doing that now, then if, if we were to go to strictly essential businesses being open and closing non-essentials, they would still need to practice the, the social distancing and the 10 people, no more than 10 people. But my question is, how is the county going to enforce that and regulate that and will there be fines and, I mean, do we have the police and manpower code enforcement, where with all resources to, to enforce that? And they should be doing all that now. And I know we talked about Home Depot and some of the, you know, grocery stores doing those guidelines now. I know Costco has lines to show you where the six feet are when you come up to the cash register. We've had some great suggestions from citizens of, you know, making the aisles one-way and monitoring that, but there again, do the, do the stores have the manpower during this crisis to, you know, follow those guidelines and, and do that as well?
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of considerations on trying to, enforcement's always been one of the larger challenges that we face here. You know, we have a finite amount of resources, but we have a lot of people and businesses in the county. And it's a matter of equity because what emails I get is that people seeing certain bit practices going on and why are they allowed to do this and we're over here, they're not? And why are we forcing this, we're not enforcing that? So, I think what Dr. Memark and Lisa Crossen are proposing is that we, we simplify that and that's one of the things that we'll have to consider here based on what I hear from the commissioners today, possibly I heard from the mayors and plus emails. Okay, Commissioner Cupid, you still have, you still have the floor?
I'm sorry, thank you, can you hear me?
Sure, we can hear you, no problem.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, I'm sorry, I had it muted. I appreciate the commentary with respect to closing businesses that have that personal touch. And those would be public businesses, not facilities that are equipped with people providing personal care for people at home. But there's been some frustration from people about some gyms that are still open. Can someone from Public Health provide some guidance with respect to those continuing offering?
So, if I understood your question, Commissioner, you were asking about gyms being still open, is that correct?
Fitness facilities and gyms.
So, again, they are all near and dear to my heart and, and I was a hospital-based fitness center manager for about 12 years. The issue that you have with all of those businesses is that by the nature of them, they are bringing people into their facility at close proximity and they are people that are coming from all over the county and it's not just your family that you're living with. And so, it's very difficult to maintain the six-foot distance and less than 10 people and so, it really goes against everything, what we're trying to do with the social distancing. I do still encourage people to try to get out and walk around their neighborhoods or to bike around their neighborhoods. We're hearing a lot of reports of that sort of thing. And so, for the time being, I think that's what we're going to have to choose. We also have a number of fitness centers or people who are in this business that have transitioned to online education. And so, I know, for example, there was a, there's a dance studio on the square, the Dance Conservatory, that's teaching, continuing to teach their dance classes online to their students. And so, their students are getting in their living room and the teacher's in her living room and they're continuing to do their dance education, their ballet education. And so, a big shout out to them because that's exactly the kind of thing and the adjustments that we need folks to make right now.
Do you have any more questions, Commissioner Cupid?
Chairman, those are all my questions for Public Health.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Gamble.
Yes, another topic, I know we've been getting email down, is outdoor burning, has been brought up by many of our constituents as a concern. What is the public health department's view on outdoor burning given the respiratory nature of this outbreak?
Yeah, I think I'm going to have, we're going to have to defer to the fire expert here.
You know, I, I, I think it's definitely something we could consider and I would have to, I guess that would be under the authority of the county manager provided through your declaration, Chairman. But I, I think it's definitely something that we could consider, being that it adds to respiratory problems. We can have that conversation, county manager, and if that's the direction we choose to go, because like you, Commissioner, I've had some phone calls and emails myself. So, we can have that conversation with the, the county manager and consult with you guys and get your opinion and your input and make a decision moving forward.
Okay.
That was the only question.
Commissioner, odd.
I'm, I'm sorry, was that regarding the burn ban?
Yes.
Okay, I, I couldn't hear Randy's response.
Basically, he says that's something that, he believes the county manager during, during the certain crisis we're in is something worth looking at and he'd be working, he'd be working with the county manager to bring that back to the board to see if it's something we want to do.
Okay, well, I've had some requests as well and according to the fire marshal, it's not recommended to, to restrict it now and it goes into effect in a month anyway.
Okay.
But how would we notify or find anybody if we did it without a 30-day notice anyhow?
Well, that's a great point because.
But what I've been, what I've been doing is sending the people that are requesting it, the medical burn ban application, because if they have asthma or their kids have asthma or other lung or, you know, breathing issues, they can file for a medical burn ban now.
Well, I, I think what we can do under the emergency orders, we can take a look to see if we can't move the, move the date up a month. That's something that's certainly viable right now, given the circumstances. So, if this thing was four or five months away, I think that'd be one issue, but since it's only 30 days away from it goes into effect anyhow, given the nature of the crisis, I think most reasonable people understand that if we started the ban now instead of in May, they were probably understanding. Yeah.
Okay, well, again, I would, I would ask the fire marshal how we could do that.
Okay, all right. Commissioner, odd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd, first off, I want to start off by saying thank you to Dr. Memark and Lisa and Chris. You know, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. I know that no one saw that in your job description, as you were going to have to be dealing with a worldwide pandemic, so thank you. Also, I want to thank Cassie and her folks and Randy and Sharon. Your IT folks have been phenomenal, but you know, everybody that's working here at the county, I just want to thank, you know, you've done a tremendous job. In a short order, as, as was mentioned, you know, we, we kind of started, you know, go like only four weeks ago, so I just want to say thank you for that. A little bit about the big boxes, I did mention that Home Depot did announce some things just before this meeting that are increasing their attempts to comply with social distancing. And this morning, I went by Publix just to kind of see, since today was day two of senior shopping and was very excited about what I saw. They had blue tape on every checkout line, six feet apart, they had blue tape in front of the pharmacy, they had the plastic shields up on all the checkout counters. I talked to the manager and he said that they wiped down all the carts, they wiped down all the keypads throughout the day and every 30 minutes at the store, they make announcements about social distancing. So, you know, my hat's off to them. I know the chairman and I are working, he's going to work on talking, reaching out to Kroger. So, I, I think that the word is getting out. And so, I, I think that, you know, I think we're being successful with that. On the things that Dr. Memark and Lisa have recommended, Mr. Chairman, I don't really see a problem with any of them. You know, just to kind of, the ones that you sent in the email, maintain the restaurants with takeout, delivery only, bars closed, require social distancing and all non-essential, six feet and the 10 people or less. And then, the personal non-touch, I totally agree. My was under the understanding that they weren't allowed anyway because I'm not sure how you can say, you can do any of those things and stay six feet apart. The essential businesses, I agree that we need to kind of emphasize with them that they need to do the social distancing and then the retail stores, like we just talked about, I think that they are making a concerted effort, Walmart's doing the same thing. So, and the closing of the parks and pools, I agree. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm comfortable with all that. Thank you.
If I could get Dr. Memark back up here and bring her, bring her presentation back up, starting with the, the famous flattened curve and the star. Okay, now, does this, does this reflect the fact that Wellstar or Kennystone is going to be opening up their ICU, their new ICU building to handle medical cases? Because I noticed that the curve is the same as it was last week when you were here. So, does that reflect, does this reflect the additional capability, capacity of Kennystone and Wellstar?
So, that's a stock, a stock graphic, so, it doesn't matter what the, the capacity is, we're trying to stay below that.
I get that.
So, if they increase it, our goal is to stay below that. And so, so it doesn't, I didn't change that. My hope, though, is when you look at the star, which graph, which line the star is on, I'm hoping that the star is going to be on the other graphic.
Well, the reason I ask that is that if you go to the chart that shows what's happened in the last week, the number of cases per day has gone down. I would think that the star would be moved more to the right.
Yes, and that, that is our hope. I don't have enough evidence to say that definitively.
Oh, I see.
But you're, you've made a very good point and I, and I feel like the star is moving over to the right and hopefully our data will show that soon. I'm very hopeful that we have been able to do this because you all have really put a lot of stuff in place and, and has, have made it possible. So, yeah, hopefully next time I see you, it'll be on the other line.
Okay. And I really hate to do this to you, but I have to because you're the professional here. Dr. Fauci last night and the president were very clear about April being a very difficult month.
Yes.
Could you put that in the context of Cobb County, how you feel?
Yeah.
What we need to be doing to make sure we don't get into that boat?
So I think we need to continue with our social distancing. So we are doing a good job and I, I do really feel that we are shifting that a little bit. Here's where I see for us, we, as we're slowing down, the cases going up, so what we're gonna see is, you know, my hope is we're at the peak, near the peak, because we're about, about a little more than two weeks out from when the schools shut down. That's a, that's a huge crowd of people to begin with, right? And then we put the, our shelter in place, in place here. So it's about a one week out from there, right? One and a half weeks. So my hope is that as we see the cases go up, as we see that level out a little bit, we'll see the cases just kind of do the, the flattened line. Here's the issue that we already have all those people that are infected now and because it's been some high-risk people, my, my concern is that we will see deaths continue to go a little bit, there'll be a lag with that. So we have people that are, are sick, so you will see though, as the cases level and start coming down, you will see the deaths follow that. But I'm a little bit concerned that, that it's just catching up, everything is catching up right now and so it may look a little concerning, but remember, there's a lag in everything that we do. So if we stopped, you know, being around each other, the transmission will be broken, but we still have, the curves are still going and they need time, just like Dr., Commissioner Cupid's audio, there's a delay, so there's a delay in that as well. So, but if everything's, if we're doing the right thing, it's all gonna level off and then come back down again.
And that lag is because of the, the reporting process?
It's the reporting and the disease. So, you know, we have a few things against us, is the inability to test and then the, the reporting is taking a bit, a bit longer than we anticipated. But remember, there's a 14-day exposure period that you have and now CDC guidelines have changed as of yesterday, that they've added the two days asymptomatic, so 48 hours before symptoms arise, they feel that people could be, show, they're contagious at that point. So they've changed that. So that complicates things a little bit, so, but it's a 14-day, so you can have expressed symptoms anytime during that time. So anywhere from two to 14 days. What we're seeing, the average is about five, is what we're seeing.
For those that are asymptomatic?
For the ones that are showing, get the symptoms at about five.
Five days.
If you're asymptomatic, then you're asymptomatic and that's with allergy season, that's really complicated things and we still have flu season, so it's tough to, we got a lot of people with runny noses out there right now, so.
Okay, so even though there's more test sites opening up, does that mean there's more test kits coming to fill that they can use?
They'll be coming, they will be coming, but we haven't quite seen that ramp up quite yet.
Okay.
So we're still under 50 a day right now. But there's a lot of hope on the horizon, so.
Okay, so for these 206 persons under interest, the POIs, those are ones that have taken the tests and are waiting the results?
Those are ones that, the 200 are either they're positive or, or PUIs, so they're waiting on tests.
Okay, are they part of the 292, 93?
No, the ones that are positive are part of that. The ones that are pending, we don't put them in until they're confirmed.
Okay, and so right now, we're finding about 20% of the POIs are coming back positive, right?
So we got 20% in our drive-throughs are coming back positive as of right now.
In our drive-throughs?
We have 50% of those results back, but about 20% are coming back positive and so that's high-risk people.
Okay, how about the rest of the test sites, like the hospital and?
I have to look, I have to do the math. I have the numbers, but I have to do the math on that one.
I'm just doing, trying to trust a number here.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So what we've talked about in the past about the drive-throughs?
Yes, sir.
Those people only are going because a doctor sent them?
Yeah, doctor or an epidemiologist.
Right, and so of the people that have shown symptoms enough for a doctor to send them, only 20% are being positive.
Yes, but even, even more restrictive than that, these are first responders, there are public safety people, there are nurses, doctors, people who live, work in nursing homes, it's, it's those people.
Right, but my, where I was trying to go with this was that we have a pretty high standard for you to get to drive-through testing.
It's a very high standard.
Right, and, and only 20% are showing positive.
Yeah, the highest risk of the highest risk, yes.
Right. So I mean, I, I think that's a positive.
Yeah, sure. So go to the chart where you have the, the latest spread chart, I think it was March 30th.
Is it this way?
Yeah, the flow chart, whatever we call this thing.
This, the heat map?
There you go, thank you, yeah. I don't have my tie on today, so. All right, so what is the, what does the yellow dot mean?
That's where there's more, the concentration in the general area. So, and then you'll see the red is a little bit, so if it's just blue, it's, you know, it's a low number of cases and if it gets red, there's more and then the yellow means there's, in that general area, there's, there's more. And that, you know, remember, this is 200-something cases, so that could only be two people in the same household. It's very, it's not, this is not exact and I want everybody to know that because I know that the Johns Hopkins thing had a problem. It is not on your house and it is not on your street. This is just a general, general color.
Yeah, but if you look at the map, okay, Ms. Chairman, I, I think what I hear Dr. Me Mark saying is this is where the person lives, or is it where they were tested? Because that yellow dot is pretty close to Jim Miller Park.
Yeah, it could be, maybe they just put that, but there, there's some homes around there too. It could be, yeah, I didn't think about that.
So go to the day before that.
Okay.
Because the yellow dot was there the day before.
So here's the 20th, you got two yellow dots.
Yeah, yep.
So that, that means that those people have, what does that mean, that, that those cases have been resolved or what?
Well, maybe they just, it's just relative, because you see, it goes from that deep red, so.
Yeah, but it's, we got yellow dots on March 20th and we got two of them, all right? And then on March 30th, we only have one.
Yeah, it may just be the concentrations, it's probably just by concentration. This is not exact, I had, we have a, it's by like percentages and things like that, so it could be just relative changes by percentage. If we get more on the other, another area, it diffuses it out.
Okay.
So it's not.
But that doesn't reflect out and in, in other words, for 30 who come in and 30 that go out, that isn't, this chart doesn't reflect that.
Yeah, no, no, this is not exact, this is just showing you an idea. So when you go back to the six and you see the five, so this is just five, so it's a concentration and it kind of diffuses, so it's just the concentrations that are moving.
So if you go to the first on March 6th, so that, the one that's over there on the right, that's Commissioner Otte's house, right?
No, it's nobody's house, so please.
Better not be.
Okay, all right. And then the last chart on deceit and care. All right, there you go.
These are things that we're working on right now.
So here's my question.
Yeah.
We know that people are holding off on their services for their loved ones until they can have a time when this time has passed.
Yeah.
And yet, we're gonna reach a certain situation here when there's enough room without having to bring in refrigerator trucks. What are your thoughts on, you have 96 hours?
Oh, to do something?
To bury your loved one.
You know, I, I can't make that decision.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that, but eventually, we're gonna run out of room, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And I understand that people, you know, want to have the appropriate ceremony, but there's also a practical matter here too.
Yeah.
That if this thing goes on for a couple of months, and I was told the other day that, for instance, most of the funeral homes have no storage capacity, so they have to put, you know, our, our loved ones somewhere. I mean, what has been past practices that public health has seen? What is the trigger point where as much as we would love to wait for a better day, public health takes a higher, a higher priority to have to bury your loved ones and then do the others, do the ceremony later?
You know, I, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but you know, anything that we can do to help people, each situation's very different, so I know because of economic constraints right now, that's a problem. People want to, to give their loved ones the proper, proper sending off and burial and so maybe people are waiting to, you know, so they can gather and things like that. So I think everybody has their own, you know, individual reasons for doing what they're doing right now. Maybe there's fear, I mean, I, I wouldn't be surprised, you know, there's, we've gotten a lot of questions about patients who are positive for COVID-19, what to do with the, the body and things like that. So I, I bet there's a lot of things and, you know, if we could, you know, take a look at those and see if this may be somewhere we can, we can help out in a way, but I think it's just, it's complicated. I feel like there's a lot of reasons that people are making their decisions right now and that, you know. So we will continue to look for ways to, to hold bodies in the meantime, but a lot of it is because of the, I'm hearing because of the financial situation right now as well.
And what is it we can do to help you out with the daycare centers and the nursing homes, which I know you're just really, really afraid that under-reporting or non-reporting or some kind of, you know?
You know, I mean, I, I think just getting the message out, I might, we have been getting, because of these calls that we've been having with the nursing homes, a lot have been really helping us out and so, you know, one of the things we don't want to see is to have a, a case that come back positive and we weren't notified or a case was positive and made to the hospital that we weren't notified. I want people to know this is not a punitive measure, this is something that we're here to help people and so help the nursing homes. So if, we've been telling them if you have supply issues or there's some sort of barrier, please let us know so we can help you, because this is something that affects all of us. So if we can catch it ahead of time, it is something that is, is gonna help everybody. So just maybe just getting that message out, please, you know, let us know if you suspect you might have one and we will try to help out.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
Back to the storage, you were saying that the funeral homes are pretty much out of capacity. Didn't our medical examiner order a trailer?
He did, yes, we ordered it.
So.
But that's for those who go to the morgue, all right, and are handled there. There are a lot, there are a lot of cases where the, the medical examiner doesn't even, doesn't process the, the past.
Okay, but how, but how are we doing as far as?
Oh, we have capacity right now. I, I spoke with the medical examiner yesterday and the, the trailer we have given him right now, he's very comfortable, we have enough capacity for, for the number of cases he's receiving. The same sort of message that Doc, that the CEO of Wellstar gave us the other day, they have capacity right now based on their model, all right? And we're matching the model very closely.
And also remember that even though we have COVID-19 happening, people are dying for other reasons too and so this is, it's not just COVID-19.
Sure.
People whose loved ones die for other reasons, they're probably facing some of the same challenges of people whose loved ones died from COVID-19. So these are, it's just a lot of, lot of challenging things that we're facing with that. So it's not because of, all because of COVID-19, it's just a challenging situation.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow or Commissioner Cupid, do you have any other questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of give an update of the community task force and the feedback we're getting from, first of all, public health, you've been great with responding to our questions and communicating with the public. Sharon Mason with the Chamber is our business community leader and the Chamber has been offering a lot of webinars for small business. Their website is full of good information for businesses, from small business loans to the Small Business Development Center, assistance at KSU. So I'd really like to applaud the Sharon and the Chamber, her team, for putting so much out there for businesses to, for assistance. The schools, both school systems, Cobb and Marietta, are working on getting instructions for the students, Wi-Fi setup and laptops if they don't have them, to do their homework and lessons and, and the teachers are doing a lot online. So we've been getting a lot of, you know, emails from the citizens on that, on that, on the school issue as well and Grant Rivera and Chris, Chris Ragstale have been great in responding to, to that as well. The churches and the nonprofits have been working together a lot too and I have to give a shout out to Dr. Ike Lighter at MUD for, we sent him an email yesterday afternoon from a man in my district who is having issues with his, with getting, being charged rent for a new place he was moving into and basically he didn't have, he lost his job, he didn't have the money to come up with the additional money that they were trying to charge. So he and his wife and three kids were living in their car. We sent an email to Dr. Ike and yesterday afternoon and I got an email just a hour or two later that, that MUD has put them up in a hotel. So it's, it's just heartwarming, the, the way the community has come together and everybody looking out for each other. But I just wanted to give, you know, a shout out for MUD and the nonprofits and, and the churches working together. And then our public input, I've been getting a lot of emails too from Jereen and Sam Owen and Jereen Grimes, from different things that they're hearing in the community and then we're, you know, connecting with the appropriate organization or group that would handle that and we've got a lot of success stories there too. So I appreciate all the hard work they're doing, I appreciate our staff coming in every day and working through these issues and, and Sharon Stanley and her staff helping me with my surface and connecting and, and all that good stuff too. So thank you all for, for helping and be safe out there.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Burrow for that report. That's really great to see that your networks are really doing a great job there. And this is the kind of thing where we get a sense of what's going on out there beyond the staff and the EOC. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, yes Chairman, thank you. I might have additional questions for public health. The first one pertains to daycares and I know this has been a, a matter that has been widely discussed. In our declaration of emergency, it makes provision for essential services for childcare inside of three different types of facilities. Can you provide some guidance on childcare that are outside of medical, industrial, government or production facilities?
What, what people can do, is that what you mean?
About, is that being, is that being considered an essential service in other jurisdictions?
So we did, we did discuss this with, with Douglas County and we tried to tighten it a little bit over there. Daycares are of a, of concern because a lot of spread will happen in daycares. It's just, it's almost like a school setting when you get children that are potentially asymptomatic, that are congregating together. I mean, my recommendation is if, if you can not have your children in daycare, if you're, you know, essential or non-essential, whatever it is, try your best to not have them there, because that is where spread is gonna occur. And so, yeah. Anything else?
Okay, great. And then another topic pertains to transit. I've received a couple of emails about concern about social distancing on transit and looked at a policy of one jurisdiction that stated that use of transit should be restricted only for persons who are going to and from work or are going to essential businesses and services or providing them. Can, is there any additional guidance that you have in that arena from our first meeting?
No, I, I think that, that, that covers it. I think we also, just making sure that we include people who need to go and, and get healthcare if they absolutely need to or care for family members that need care, those kind of things. There are many people that absolutely rely on public transportation, so you know, if you're doing something that's essential, I think that, that, you know, but taking any precautions that we can on public transportation is important as well. I know we've been doing a lot of that.
Commissioner, you're, you're right about the trying to allow people to still get to work, especially essential work or to seek essential services. The only thing that I'm not sure we wrote down, but it is in guidance, is about upping the cleaning on the buses. And then also, I would imagine, you might have to tell me this, but I would imagine that our volumes have gone down a bit with people sheltering in place in general. And so then if you can have your lines be able to serve folks where they can social distance on the bus, you know, that's recommended. And then if you can do some additional cleaning and if when they get off the bus, they can use hand sanitizer or wash their hands, all of those things are gonna help reduce transmission. of those things are gonna help reduce transmission in, in addition to them using the public transit.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you. And then finally, I know it was provided that testing is not a reliable source at this time because of limitations on testing. And I just want to clarify information I had about, of having 100 tests per day. Are we only receiving 50 tests, or is it...
So far, we've been doing, oh, sorry. So, so far, we've been doing 50 or under on average at this time. And so, whatever we get delivered, we schedule out those, those tests. That's just with the drive-through, but the hospitals are able to do testing, but they are on small scale. And then, some physicians' offices are also able to do some small scales, very small-scale testing.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Moving to another topic, I've received a number of emails from vendors, and this includes citizens or nonprofits that would like to help, or have particular resources that can help, anything from making masks to having pop-ups in hospitals.
Commissioner, thank you so much. You know, the, the community has really stepped up to offer a number of benefits and help, and however they can. And we just can't express enough gratitude for that. So, in addition to people doing their, taking responsibility for their own behaviors in these social distancing efforts, they've also said, "What can I do to help while I'm home?" And so, all of those kinds of offers, we are routing, we have a logistics chief, and we have a purchasing director that are trying to vet those offers so that we help route them to where it's needed in the community. So, for example, we've had folks that have offered food, and so, we've routed those over to MUD ministries or to the schools. They've offered for masks, and so, we've routed those to our staff who are managing the Strategic National Stockpile and the supplies of PPE. And so, I'd say, you know, keep those offers coming. I appreciate that you've sent me a few emails about that, and we'll just continue to vet them. I do want folks to just be aware that sometimes we do have offers that we have to vet. You know, they sound good, but just like in any crisis, you do have folks who will offer something, and it's not quite the quality standard that you need, or it's not quite the fit that you need. And so, that's why we're having to vet them through our purchasing and our logistics chief. But I'd say, keep them all coming. And I'll just, if, if there's no more question for me?
Commissioner Cupid, do you have any more questions? Commissioner Cupid, do you have any more questions?
Yes, just a finality. The PowerPoint that Public Health provided, did that list all of Public Health's recommendations?
Yes, in general terms, we can provide, yes, in general terms. I think I sent you all a couple of things when I sent you the comparison of the different orders for the counties and, the county and the cities. That was a little more specific, but yes, that, the slide that you see about the recommendations includes all of those. I just, I, I do really appreciate that you all are looking at this again. It's really a difficult decision and a difficult spot that you all are in. But we have seen over the country, as we've been looking at best practices, that taking small baby steps just does seem to prolong the pain. And so, we're really recommending that you take this, these, these measures that we're recommending so that we hopefully can get through this curve a little faster, and folks can, and businesses can get back to work. I know it's horribly painful. There's no doubt about that. But, but the faster that we can put some of these things in place, particularly like the shelter-in-place efforts, I think the faster we're gonna get through the curve that Dr. Memark was explaining. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no other questions. Commissioner Ott?
I just want to, you know, we, we've talked about a lot of folks doing a lot of things, and then the one, two groups that we haven't really talked about are the, the healthcare workers at the hospitals and the doctor's office, I mean, the heroes, and then also, public safety, firefighters, police officers. I mean, these are all the people that are running, you know, we've always talked about how they are the ones running into the fires, or running towards bullets. And we now have healthcare workers and the public safety that are going into our homes when we get sick, and they are, you know, face-to-face with the virus. So, I just want to thank them for all that they're doing.
Okay. One last, one last chance. Commissioner Burrow, do you have something? Commissioner Burrow, I believe you had something you want to say?
I just thank you to everyone.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Cupid, I want to make sure that, since you have a lag there, that we've gotten all your questions out. No, I just want to make sure she's, because there's a lag here, and I want to make sure we, we, we don't, we don't cut her off inadvertently.
I just thank you. Yes. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, thank you. That was my last question for Public Health. I think one of the things that's come up during our discussion that hasn't been addressed is enforcement of shelter-in-place, and wanted to know if you had any ideas on how that can be enforced?
Well, I'm, I'm still wrestling with that. I just think it's really bad pub, a real bad public policy to arrest people, you know, for violating some of these, these infractions. Look, it's just tough. Everyone's stressed right now. For one thing, the school, people with kids have been home for two weeks already. We had, we just put the emergency order in place a week ago, and there's still a lot of latitude here. I just think we're in a whole new area right now. We have to be very, very, very sensitive and sympathetic to people that are wrestling with some real-world issues. And, you know, if they reach a point where they just have to go out there and, you know, I just, I'll use this word, you know, civil disobedience, and they need to go for a walk in a park, I just find it hard to believe that we're that kind of county that would arrest them for that. I think we need to be very, very compassionate for all the people with what they're going through right now, because here's the real thing that I've seen in the last three or four days.
Sure.
A vast majority of the people in this county are complying with the emergency order. So...
Oh, yeah.
And I think that 95% of the people that are doing that understand that what's at stake. Those 5% or less, and it's probably less, that don't, you know, they're, that one way or another, they're gonna get their just desserts, because they're gonna expose themselves, and they're gonna end up in the hospital, or even worse, or there's circumstances. So, I think that we, I don't, I, I, we already know that our public safety is being asked to do things that was never in their job description to begin with. They're being exposed on a daily basis. They have family members at home that they have to go back to, and I know their family members are worried that these public safety, the health workers, you know, there's a lot of concern here. So, let's, I, I'm just not, I'm just not the kind of person that I believe this county needs to be going saying, "If you've done something, we're gonna, we're gonna find you, and we're gonna take you to court." I don't, I don't think we're there yet.
Okay. And certainly, I hear where you're coming from, and I support much of your statement. We've had a number of people email with concerns, and that may be the route that they continue to follow, if they see social gathering in a way that causes concern. Just in my research of different policies, I've noticed one county had a form that could be filled out to provide notice to the towns when people are congregating or committing violations. But I guess one thing that makes this a little extreme is that it's more than just the person that's not socially distanced themselves, I guess they're just desserts, but it's those that they continue to come in contact with. And I, I can't tell you that I had the answer, but I did find the, the form that was on a municipal county site to be something that could be utilized as a tool, as anything to provide notice to certain populations or to certain businesses that they've been observed, and they, they may not be in compliance with what's in our emergency declaration.
Yeah. Well, if you, if you'd send me that form, what I'll do is I'll put that, run that through the EOC, and then I'll have Director Kreider work with public safety and, and also other parts of the county here to see what we can do. But I just want to make sure here that, that the balance is putting something out there that you believe that the, the community is gonna comply with, you know, and the majority of people are gonna comply with. Because if you put something out there, and you clearly don't enforce it, then that, that falls into, well, if they're not gonna enforce this, then they won't enforce that. And next you know, we have this quinella of unenforcement. So, I think that we're open to any, any, any proposal right now. I just want to make sure that it's something, we put it in place, that it's something we have a pretty degree of assurance that we're gonna be able to execute it.
Exactly. And I agree with you, and I think that's been the ongoing challenge that people have with our shelter-in-place policy, is by stating it and having various exceptions or things that contradict it, don't give it the amount of key that some people may desire to ensure that it's being put in place.
Right, yeah.
I don't necessarily have to answer as to what's the best policy, other than what's been recommended. It's for people with shelter-in-place that isn't for essential services. But again, looking at how we're trying to be mindful of all aspects of our county and business operations, there could be other options out there to provide what's a bit more key.
Well, as you know, I'm, I'm certainly open to every op, every option. I mean, all in this together, and collectively, we'll find a way forward.
Thank you. And then one thing I didn't share, I did support Commissioner Gamble's question, or perhaps even her with respect to the outdoor burning, says if there was opportunity for us to ground that at school, I'd be in support of us limiting that at this time.
Sure, okay. I think there'll probably be a lot of support by the board on that measure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think we're adjourned. Thank you very much for all being here today.